Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for April 22nd, 2014. Before we begin, Mr. George Monroe will come forward and lead us in prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Monroe?
Shall we pray? Hail to Heavenly Father, again we thank you for this privileged Lord that we have the freedom to meet here, Lord. We thank you for each and every one that has come out. Lord, we thank you. And we ask you to bless our clerk and our mayor and our commissioners and our manager, Lord, that you undertake for them and protect them, Lord, and be with this meeting and we'll give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Thank you. And before we get into the meat of the business, we have some recognitions to make. Could I have Ms. Shirley Green, if she's in the audience, come up? And is there a Mr. Greg Bordenman? Ms. Deborah Griffin? Is that it? Very good. Well, these three individuals, Deborah Griffin, Greg Bordenman, Shirley Green, recently were recognized with the Outstanding Citizenship Year Award, and we coordinate that along with the Muskegon Rotary. And you received your award at luncheon?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. Okay, well, we don't have any additional lunch. You have your reward, but we want to recognize you for your work within the community and the treasures that you are. Beginning with Shirley Green, she resides in her home located approximately 200 feet from her childhood residence. She has a deep love of the city and a deep motivation for all the planning and beautification she aptly does for Lakeside and the City of Muskegon. Just ride through Lakeside and you'll see the wonderful job Shirley's done trying to revitalize the area. She's been involved in many events, including spearheading the holiday basket drive for shut-ins in her neighborhood, assisting several school functions involved in the Lakeside Neighborhood Association, the Lakeside District Association, and Muskegon Medical Associates, as well as organizing the Lakeside Easter egg hunt and volunteering for Memorial Day Parade in Lakeside. And each year, she hosts a pumpkin roll down the hill of her dead-end street. As one friend states, Shirley is a strong-minded person. I never seen that. If she's unable to do it herself, she will find the necessary people to help her accomplish her goal. She's much admired for her strong will and willingness to keep fighting for her community. Ladies and gentlemen, Shirley Green. Now, the next person, Greg Bordenman, you look awfully familiar. We've probably run into each other over the past...
Several times over the...
Decades.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
Thirty. Greg is described as a caring, trustworthy, and respectful individual. He's a lifelong resident of Muskegon, a member of the Episcopal Church, and a proud Big Red. Greg has served on many boards to promote and better our community. His leadership and dedication serving on the Housing Board of Appeals here at the City of Muskegon has been helpful in fighting blight and bringing beauty to our city. He has a passion for making Muskegon a better place and has led in his current position as chairman of both the Nelson Airway Improvement Association and the Neighborhood Associations of Muskegon. In addition, he's been a block captain, participated in the Citizens Police Academy, organized several car shows, and volunteered for many events as well as fundraising efforts. He's a great promoter of downtown, employed by Can Do Industries, an organization that helps individuals overcome barriers and helps prevent them from joining... that may prevent them from joining the workforce. Greg has convinced his employer to invest in downtown by opening an office in Terrace Plaza where his office currently resides. He was also part of the Muskegon Retail Incubator and was instrumental in seeing the restoration and adaptive reuse of the Russell Block. Greg's friends describe him as a kind of person who's willing to help anyone, loved by many, nonjudgmental, has a belief in people and their potential, and an ability to connect with individuals from all walks of life, and has a strong faith and commitment to his community, his friends, and his family. He's a great friend. We've just got to make sure that you don't get sick because, you know, I got to run out in the middle of the night and bring you the right stuff when you take the wrong medication.
We'll never forget that.
Don't. You take care of yourself. Good. Deborah Griffin is described as a dedicated, caring, and intuitive individual. She's used her many skill sets to help improve the community by listening and helping those in the community who feel they are not being heard. One way she achieved her objective was to found a group called Parents Have Power, a Muskegon parent involvement group working to unite the community in support of public schools. She founded the advocacy group to give parents of students in Muskegon Public Schools a voice in the many changes proposed in the school system, and there's been a whole heck of a lot of them over the past several years. Am I there, Deborah? With Deborah's computer training, she was able to create a website and also started a Facebook page so parents may share ideas. The website has also created a mechanism for sharing information on how to empower our children through education. She founded a political advocacy group, Spark, which is a grassroots coalition whose goal is to begin an honest dialogue between community members about issues that currently affect the county, primarily in Muskegon and Muskegon Heights, including feelings of isolation, race relations, poverty, high unemployment, neighborhood blight, and violence, and other issues. She's also the co-founder of Big Girls Do Workout, an advocacy group that promotes exercise and healthy eating habits and overall healthy lifestyle targeted at full-sized women in the community. How about full-sized men? The website she created showcases different exercising techniques, healthy recipes and other ways of releasing stress and ways to build self-esteem. Citizens like Deborah are ones that make and keep communities strong. She knows that it's not always easy, but she keeps moving, and she continues to engage fellow citizens in the effort to improve our community. And I forgot to... because we gave Shirley a clap, I forgot to give you a clap in between, but you know I love you. But, and for Deborah. Let's give them all the hand. Let's thank them. Your awards that you got and your lunch, your doggy bakes, put them in here. Gregory? Well, shall we carry on, or is that good enough?
That was very good.
Okay, good. Consent agenda, please.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the April 7th Commission Work Session Meeting and the April 8th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Request to fly the Norwegian flag, City Clerk, summary request. Sons of Norway are requesting permission to fly the Norwegian flag at City Hall on Saturday, May 17th, in honor of Norway's Constitution Day. Staff recommendation, approval of the request. City MDOT Agreement for Veteran Park Improvements Engineering, summary request. Approve the contract with MDOT for the pedestrian mobility improvements at the Veterans Memorial Park at the causeway between northbound and southbound, M120, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Amendment to Chapter 30, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 4, Recreational Fires, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the proposed amendments to Chapter 30, Article 4, the Recreational Fire Ordinance of the City of Muskegon Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance. The Muskegon Fire Department has reviewed and proposed changes in our recreational fire ordinance to better serve the community at large and address illegal burning issues in our city in which fire police must respond to in order to maintain general public safety. The amendments are to address size of the fire pit, materials that are allowed in the fire pit, used manufactured portable burning stand, the prohibition of steel burned barrels commonly used for burning trash and yard waste, and examples of items that cannot be burned without violating the amended ordinance. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approving amendments to said existing ordinance. DWE, MBE, WBE Procurement Policy for Federally Contracted Programs and Collaborations, Affirmative Action and Risk Management, summary request. The Contract and Procurement Policy for Federally Contracted Programs and Collaborations has been developed to include the Fair Share Goals language to meet the good faith effort requirements of our federally contracted funds. The Fair Share Goals are specific to the Environmental Protective Agency contracts and good faith efforts are standard to our federally contracted funds. The steps for good faith efforts will allow the city to achieve compliance in all of our federal contracts and ensure that the disadvantaged business enterprises, DBE, minority business enterprises, MBE, and women-owned business enterprises, WBEs, are actively solicited for participation in the bid process for contracting and procurement of supplies, construction, equipment, and services under all federal contracts and collaborations. The policy will be placed in all contracts and collaborations that include federal funds. Staff recommendation, approval of the City of Muskegon, DBE, MBE, WBE Procurement Policy for Federally Contracted Programs and Collaborations, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Fireworks Display Permit from Muskegon Country Club, City Clerk, summary request. Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4, 2014, at the Muskegon Country Club, 2801 Lake Shore Drive. Fire Marshal Metcalf will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance. Fireworks Display Permit for 4th of July Celebration at Heritage Landing, City Clerk, summary request. Night Magic is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4 at Heritage Landing. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Item C, Charlie.
Commissioner Turner?
Seeing no others, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read with the exceptions of Item C, Charlie, and E, Echo.
Second. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented minus Item C and Item E. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both regarding the City MDOT Agreement for Veterans Park Improvements.
Second. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign regarding the MDOT Agreement for Veteran Park Improvement. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, we all know of this area as an entrance into our town and an important one, but more importantly, it is a symbol of our respect for our veterans who have served this country. And I see that there are members of the park group here, and I thought perhaps I'd like the opportunity to explain to the general public the improvements that this will involve. So...
Do we have takers? Yes, we do. If you could just get your name and address and dig right in.
I'm Dr. Dennis Cobbler. I live in 1045 Camelot in Laketon Township, but I had a practice here in downtown Muskegon for 40-plus years. We've been working with a combination of great partnerships, not only the Northside Lions, the County Veterans Advisory Board, the Vet Center, the Chapter 31 of the Vietnam Veterans of America, the County of Muskegon, the City of Muskegon, the City of North Muskegon, and we've worked with MDOT and Hooker DeYoung and our architectural engineer here, Bruce Colleen, to come up with a project that will... basically, the first project we're doing is to remove the lights along the road and place it along the sidewalks, so the park will be lit from within rather than from the street, thereby using more friendly to the community. Also, at the north end will be a continuation of the sidewalk so it's all handicap accessible. And this is all part of the MDOT grant. Paving the four existing parking lots, putting in a fifth parking lot up on the northwest corner on the other side of the river, and this is going to be bringing in a lot more money to the community with other grants that we're working with. So, we think this first project with MDOT is just the tip of the iceberg for this park, and it truly will, by the time we're done and rededicate the park at the 80th anniversary in November, this will be, again, Michigan's Most Beautiful Mile.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for all your efforts and your hard work. We really appreciate it. Anything from the Commission? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to the approval of the City of Muskegon, DBE, MBE, WBE Procurement Policy for Federally Contracted Programs and Collaborations, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rinsipasipiga, to approve the City of Muskegon, DBE, MBE, WBE Procurement Policy for Federally Contracted Programs and Collaborations, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Commissioner?
I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering how the solicitation works. Where do we find people from these three different organizations to give the information when something goes up for bid?
Or for these identified groups? Yep. Ms. Thompson, can you enlighten us?
I think, I'm Twana Thompson, the Affirmative Action and Risk Management Director for the City of Muskegon. And this actually came about because we were working on compliance for one of our federally contracted, you know, projects that we had completed. And what we are looking at in terms of, like, recruitment, it would be just, we have a database that we are currently updating of our disadvantaged business enterprises, which does include the minority business enterprises and the women-owned business enterprises. So, any of our contracts, what was requested was that I create a policy instead of for every single contract that comes up, having a different policy for each one. What was requested was that I come up with a policy that we could put into the contract language for each of our contracts that we would sign.
And then, the bid process would be the same for anybody else soliciting or offering a proposal to the city?
Yes, and it would be actively, you know, if we know that there's an electrical contractor in the area that's a minority contractor, making sure that they're aware of the bid, but also, you know, posting it in public places, you know? And I do have an equal opportunity distribution list that I send information out to. So, and then if people would like to review the contracts, they are welcome to come up to the city to review them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from the Commissioners? Matt, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have public hearings, please?
2014-2015 Action Plan, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request, to conduct a public hearing of the 2014-2015 Action Plan for Public Comments. Staff recommendation, to receive comments about the proposed 2014-2015 Action Plan at the Public Commission Meeting.
Anita, do you need to speak on this? No, okay. We have the... I'm just looking, so... The Community Neighborhood Services Department has presented and made public their proposed 2014-2015 Action Plan. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and proceed.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. And do you want to...
You think that's it?
Is that it? Okay. All right. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by, I'm sorry, who was that? Commissioner German, to receive comments about the proposed 2014-2015 Action Plan and close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Just, just while I don't... Just as a reminder, particularly, you know, so many of us are relatively new to the Commission. When we look at other items with our budget, this is something that, when I first was elected and started serving, we were getting nearly four times as much revenue from the federal government through these programs that we get currently. There are things we used to be able to do with these that, because those drastic cuts have been made, we're not able to sustain with just local revenue. So, I think it's important to realize that, you know, this was a very important, still is a very important source of revenue for some of the things that we do that are very important to this community, and through means outside of our control, this revenue has been significantly reduced over the years.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else, Commissioners? Matt, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have new business?
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following, Public Safety. 1974 Dowd Street, 1522 Clinton Street Garage Only, 1265 Holt Street, 912 East Isabella Avenue, 1141 Jefferson Street. Summary request, this is a request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision to demolish.
Before I make a motion, do you want to ask if there's... Oh, sure. Are there any individuals here to speak on 1974 Dowd Street, 1522 Clinton Street Garage Only, 1265 Holt Street, 912 East Isabella, 1141 Jefferson?
Seeing no one, I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Structures as described by the clerk.
Second. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Johnson to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to demolish 1974 Dowd Street, 1422 Clinton Street Garage Only, 1265 Holt Street, 912 East Isabella Avenue, 1141 Jefferson Street. Any discussion?
I think you meant 1522.
1522 Clinton Garage Only. Very good. Thank you. Anything else from the Commission on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Special Event Request, Muskegon Bike Time 2014 Planning and Economic Development. Summary request, Muskegon Bike Time has filed a special event application for the annual Bike Time Festival in downtown Muskegon to be held on July 17, 18, and 19, and 20 of 2014. Portions other requests require City Commission approval. Staff recommendation, as in past years, it is recommended that staff be allowed to make the final decisions regarding rental fees and actual costs to be coordinated through the city manager. In addition, staff recommends that if Bike Time picks up items such as picnic tables, bleachers, and trash cans for distribution at the proper locations, there will be no equipment rental charge to Bike Time. This must first be approved by and coordinated through city staff. It is also recommended that city staff review staffing levels for city personnel with the Bike Time staff, with the city making the final decision on the number of city staff needed for the event. Regarding street closures, staff recommends approval with the condition that Bike Time notify affected downtown businesses of the dates and times of street closures and the date and time that no parking restrictions go into effect on those streets.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood?
I move to accept the recommendation to approve with the condition that Bike Time notify affected downtown businesses of the dates and times of street closures and the date and time that no parking restrictions go into effect on those streets.
For... Is that good enough? Okay. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, supported by Commissioner Rinsipasipiga, to recommend... or Byron Turnquist. Hearing aids. That we approve the special event request for Muskegon Bike Time 2014, and that final decisions regarding rental fees, actual costs, and contact with downtown businesses, et cetera, be approved by city staff. I think I got that. Okay. Chief? Did you want to make any type of staff report before we begin discussions?
I think I'll respond if needed, answer information if it comes up. If not, I think...
Very good. Okay. Questions from Commissioners?
Do you even need a... Jim Castro? Let me see.
Sure.
Probably going back to Jesus, seemed like from the day I started here, we began working with Bike Time Group to come up with a plan that worked best in the downtown. But the biggest sticking point at the time seemed to be how the farmer's market was going to work into the situation. We met with their group on a number of occasions, including a number of key staff people, including chief as well, and we came up really with a plan that, for the most part, mimics what we've done in years past, with the understanding that the farmer's market may or may not be able to come into play in future years, but essentially trying to help the event coexist with the farmer's market during the days that they will coexist. Other than that, there were just a few tweaks, and you guys probably see them, and they're moving some of the things off of the sidewalks and into the side streets, and then working with some property owners on some concerns that they had with kind of late-night traffic and the things that go on maybe after Bike Time officially ends at 11 o'clock. Some of that included working with Bike Time to maybe improve the police presence out there during those times, and also to get some of the other brick-and-mortar establishments on board with helping us keep a better eye on what needs to happen to make it a good event for everybody during the event, including after the event. We think we came up with a pretty good plan that addresses most of the needs that we've been aware of. Chief went through... Chief went through statistics from previous years to see what sorts of issues had been, had taken place, or at least had been reported to us in the past, and there really hasn't anything of significance that we were able to find. So staff recommendation continues to be, to approve, approve the event and allow us to work with the event organizers to make sure that the event goes off without a hitch and is of good benefit for the community.
Thank you. Commissioners, you're in receipt of two communications, one from two ninety-seven Clay Condo Owners Association, and a response from representatives of Bike Time. Representatives of both parties are here. Prior to the vote, I will allow representatives of both parties to give any additions to any materials that were not contained in those communications as, as a follow-up, if they requested. Mr. Paul Wright from the Clay Condo Owners Association, if you'd like to step forward, I just need your name and address, and again, any additions that we have not already had brought before us in your earlier communication, and you have ten minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. The two ninety-seven Clay Condo Association's asked me to come here, and I am a member of the Board of Directors, I also own two properties in the complex, and I live there. So this is very personal to us, this is our residence, and while we appreciate the concerns of, that have been expressed for the businesses along Western, we have a long history of ignoring those of us who have to pay the price twenty-four seven, and in this case, those entire four days. We have thirty-five residential units in our building. Most of those are owned by people who have come there to the building within the last seven years. So these are people who have made a new commitment to downtown. The building was in some sort of disrepair, and those individuals have invested about a hun, a half a million dollars so far within the last three years. We have another half a million dollars on the table for the coming five years. So we feel we're making a very significant commitment to bring residential properties to downtown. We've done some things with our property to really wed us to the core downtown, right down to turning our entrance from Webster to Clay. It may be a small thing on paper, but the psychological change between us entering from the back door off of Webster that used to be the business US thirty-one, as opposed to coming in our driveway through the front door off of Clay Avenue, we really feel that the property that we're talking about here for the festival, we think of it as our living room. And so things that are going to happen in our living room are pretty personal to us. When we have experienced Bike Time, many of us have found that we have to leave town. We are excluded from our residence, you cannot sleep, you cannot get in and out. The two businesses that operate in our building, they happen to both be law firms, they have to close their doors for three days because neither their employees nor their clients can get anywhere close to our building. Those of us who leave, we come back late on Sunday night or early Monday morning to the aftermath, and it's the aftermath that really tells the story. As the facilities manager, that's my role on the board, it falls to us to have to clean up. Everything from debris from the food services, where people have walked out of the festival, gotten as far as our building, which is a block away from the core, discard all their food containers, some with food still in it, they pile them in our planters where we have the flowers planted, we have people sitting on the front steps smoking weed, we have people loitering on our private property in our parking lot, we've even had reports of people urinating on the building in the back alley. These are very personal to us. So when we started looking at, at the festival, we recognized that there is one fundamental problem with this festival, and that's crowd control. With the lack of structures on Western, there are no buildings that control how people walk through that area, and with the festival not erecting any physical barriers, there are no designated points of ingress and egress for the festival. This is very, in great contrast to Heritage Landing, where we have only two points of ingress and egress and pull off great festivals. When you go in and out of Heritage Landing, you pass through security. It's not, you know, armed guards, but you get padded down, you get checked for things. People are not checked here. So we have a hundred thousand people invited to our living room. A hundred thousand people. According to Racket, they make as much in those three days as they do in the other three hundred and sixty-two days of the year. If you should do the mathematics, that means there is a nine thousand percent increase in burden to Western Avenue and our neighborhood. If I were to ask you for a permit to use our piece of land at two ninety-seven Clay Condos for a nine thousand percent increase in burden to the infrastructure, I bet I wouldn't get it, because I would be told I couldn't control it. And that's the problem here, we can't control a hundred thousand people with the very limited security and law enforcement personnel here, and we who live there pay the price. Businesses all up and down Western and in our building have to close, residents have to leave and give up their homes for three days and nights, some stay with friends, some have to get hotels. It just doesn't seem to be consistent with what we just sat through two or three weeks ago now, at the, in the ballroom of the Century Club, where we looked at the upcoming form-based code for city planning and zoning. In all those instances, the buildings are slated to be four to six stories tall, with first being, first floor being residential, and floors two through four or two through six being residential. If what we want to do is to draw residents to downtown, how we use our living room will matter. I know people who don't come downtown during Bike Time because they can't stand the disruption, they don't patronize the businesses that are open. I've had prospective businesses tell me they won't set up business in downtown, in part because this is too disruptive, and it's in the middle of the summer, in the middle of July, when everyone wants to be downtown and walking and enjoying downtown. So we really think that the commission has to start recognizing the fact that this is too big, and that the very basis for the festival is inconsistent with the intended purpose of downtown, that being retail and primarily residential. That's why we have sent you the eleven points in our letter, asking you to not allow this festival to go forward. We have met with the festival organizers on one occasion alone, and once with the city manager and, and police chief. We don't feel that our concerns are being addressed, have been addressed. I understand that there has been a response from the Bike Time organizers to our eleven points. I've not been privy to that response, so I don't know what's in it. So I have to assume that, you know, they, they chose not to share it with us, but our concern is, we are evicted from our homes and our businesses, and we're trying to make an investment and a commitment to bring residentials downtown permanently, and this festival, we are told, and we have experienced, is contrary to that goal. Hence our request that it not go forward on Western Avenue. This is more suited for your backyard, not for your living room. That's what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Clyde Whitehouse.
My name is Clyde Whitehouse, I'm the chairman of Bike Time, and also the owner of Rod Harley-Davidson at one forty-nine Shoreline Drive. The gentleman that just spoke is correct, we did meet with him twice, once personally, just the couple of members, or one member, I should say, Dave Burlingame, and then we met with them with the city manager and the chief of police, and discussed their concerns about the event, and of course, their living room. We've responded in the letter, I believe you guys have in front of you, so I won't bore you with all the details in our response to their problems and concerns. What I will address is that we have addressed some of the concerns. As you know, we're going to take all the vendors and all the porta-johns and those type of things off the sidewalk and off the streets for safety reasons. We decided to put them on the side streets for those safety reasons, but now we've decided to further address their concerns by putting the porta toilets further back on each one of those streets, so that there was, when there isn't egress or leaving of the event, there will be porta-johns where people could use them before they enter onto Clay Street and before they get to their living room. We obviously do not want anybody from Bike Time having any, going to the bathroom, you might say, on anybody's property, on Clay Street or any other street in the city of Muskegon, or on the properties in which align those streets. We've also put additional trash cans on Western Avenue, and we're going to put them again all up and down Clay Street, so that when they bring something from the vendors, whether it's food or, or a piece of paper from someone that bought a T-shirt, doesn't like the bag, and they want to throw it on the street, they'll have a place to put it. We've also picked up more security this year, so that we can put more security around the town, addressing the concerns, this was with private security I'm talking about, the chief could address any additional police, and how he's going to do that, but our security will also rover around during the event, and most effectively after the event is over at eleven o'clock, so that there aren't people on Clay Street, Western Ave, or any other streets, Morris, those type of things, to address the concerns of which he just talked. It is a hundred thousand people. We will say that it's hard to control a hundred thousand people, but I also will say that it's pretty beneficial to the community to have a hundred thousand people come to our community, so they can see where we live, what we do here, our businesses, and hopefully they will come back to live and bring their businesses back here. I understand their concerns, we've tried to address them the best we can, with the festival that's been here for seven years, with minimal problems and concerns from anybody else that we know of. He addresses people that he says that have to leave their town and their, their home, and if they do, obviously, that's not what we intend to have happen, but we haven't had any other concerns from other people in reference to that. He says businesses close on Western Ave, there probably are businesses that close on Western Ave, but they're also closed other weekends as well. They haven't been addressed to us that that's been the problem because of the event. So we have done as much as we can do this year, furthering our commitment to the community and to people like them and their homes. Don't really know what else to say other than that. The police could, the police chief could maybe address some of the other things, if you'd like to hear from him, than the things that he's done. We're hoping tonight that, obviously, that we can get a positive vote tonight, because it is getting closer within ninety days of the event, and we have made commitments to sponsors, vendors, other people in the community, and I know that the, the city commission has talked to us, and of course, it's been in the paper, that we came to terms on the farmer's market, which I want to thank everybody for doing that and working together with us. We're looking forward to a great event this year, and we're hoping for a positive vote tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Clyde. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
I'd just like to say, you know, I appreciate the businesses working together, trying to come to a means of understanding where this could be beneficial to the city of Muskegon and to the residents as well, and also with the farmer's market, you know, giving leeway and the residents, I, you know, do have concerns about, you know, the vandalism, crowd control. Also, I have a question, and maybe the chief can answer this, and Mr., is it Whitehouse? Okay. Also, your event, if this is approved, and forecasting to next year, you're looking at a hundred thousand this year, do you anticipate that that number will grow next year due to a successful event? And I think we, as the city of Muskegon, need to show a strong arm stating that we will not tolerate ignorant, ignorance, I can't even say the word now, you know, anyone being ignorant, or that type of behavior and vandalism, or anything like that. So I think, you know, as a positive city, and what we're trying to do is get people downtown, and I, from what I understand, that was the whole purpose of, you know, bringing a farmer's market downtown, having events like Bike Time. Also, you know, having a safe environment, too, for the citizens and the residents, but I'd like to see if this is approved, you know, everyone work together and this thing be a successful event.
In saying that it be a successful event, whether it would grow or not next year, I, I can't really answer the question of whether it will grow. How, how I will answer that is, I got a bottle of water here, and you can only put so much water in this bottle. As an event, we have our concerns or thoughts that you can only bring so many people to downtown Muskegon and safely have them on our streets. Over seven years, we've had anywhere from thirty-five thousand to a hundred thousand people, not all at one time. The hundred thousand people is over a four-day period of time. Saturday is probably the most busiest day, so the most amount of people are here on Saturday. But in saying that, in order for the event to get bigger and grow, and whether we want that or not is another situation, we feel that the, the current status and volume is controllable, and we have controlled it over the last seven years. In order for the event to grow, it's going to have to grow outside of downtown Muskegon to be safe, and obviously, we're going to need more places for people to stay, camping may be part of that, hotels, if the casino is built out by the mall, there would be rooms out there, but I think it's going to take that before the event can grow. I know people say, we'd like it to be two times bigger, three times bigger. That's not going to happen in the, in the near future, nor do we want it to, because you can only put so much water in this bottle, number one. As far as working with the farmer's market, yes, we had a little issue in the beginning, and I think it was basically an issue of point of view of how that could work. We'll see how it works this year, and I'm, have quite confident that the commission and Bike Time can work together to make it the best it can be. The events that went through in a couple of meetings that we had was enjoyable for me, because everybody did work together, and we came to a conclusion that was beneficial to everybody involved. Did I answer all your questions?
Yeah, and one other question. And you also stated you were going to provide more security.
Yes.
And my question is, with that security, are these trained security personnel that you'd be hiring, will they be carrying weapons, or are they trained to deal with crowd controls of a capacity of this nature?
The company is Crowd Control, I guess they use that name for that reason, I'm not sure, but we've used them for seven years, they do not carry weapons, I do not believe, right there. They do not carry weapons, but we're going to expand that so that we can address the concerns of Clay Street, but not just Clay Street, we have Morris Avenue, we have Shoreline. We want to make sure we control the entire event, not only safe-wise with security, but also for trash, trash pickup, porta-johns for the concerns that they have. Let's, let's not be naive, there's a hundred thousand people here, they're drinking beer. Things are going to happen, but I think the police have done an unbelievable job over the last seven years, and the chief has been here for a few years, he's done an unbelievable job controlling that, keeping it safe for the participants and the people of Muskegon, and we should applaud him for that, as well as being welcoming to the people that come here, because we have to welcome them if we plan on them coming back and taking any type of interest in Muskegon. Any other questions that I can answer for anybody?
Not a question, just a comment. I think events are, you know, I've been involved in a lot of events downtown, and there's a lot of ways to look at it when you're using other people's property, and, you know, there's a lot of sides. I think over this year, we had some issues that came up with changes in downtown property ownership and things like that. I think events are really what make a community unique, though, and when Bike Time started in Muskegon, I think that was a great addition to the downtown events, and I think, you know, it's always a matter of compromise, and it's always a matter of you never know exactly what's going to happen, but you have to deal with the problems and, you know, be as proactive as you can to foresee, you know, what you think is going to happen and avoid things. So I think generally, it's gone very well, and I'm sure and confident it's going to be another great event this year, so I, I think we should support it.
Thank you. I, I think it's been a great event now, I'm probably biased to some extent, but I think it's been a great event for the community. Any other questions, concerns that I can address, or the chief can address?
Does anybody have any questions for chief?
Well, I think you had, you know, I'd like to hear answers to the questions that you had, so I was going to say...
Yeah, he pretty much covered it. Yeah, he pretty much covered it. I guess, Chief Lewis, through the past events, and when we've had the Bike Time events, were there any reports of vandalism? You might not be able to think back that far, I'm not sure. But with properties being vandalized due to a large crowd or crime going up during that time of the event of Bike Time, in the areas of the gentleman that talked earlier?
You know, to answer your question, I think both, I think both the neighbor and the event planners were accurate what they stated. The fact is, there's thousands of people here, and that's why we deploy officers at, you know, at that location. Of course, we start out with a cadre of officers, and we escalate that through the day, and to, of course, de-escalate in the late evening or early morning hours to deter a lot of things that are occurring. You know, we're all ambassadors for the city, so we're at these events, we try to be as kind, but yet fair and forceful with people when they are, start misbehaving. One thing we always do is we do an after-action report to see what had occurred, and so I pulled that information out from last year. And I'll tell you, as with the other years, you know, like I told you, we put together a security plan based on the last year's problems, and that's what we deploy for the upcoming year. And last year, we reported over 20 incidents over the four days. I don't think that's that high. We had about, basically, eight serious crimes, those like assaultive-type things, that we actually took action on and maybe made an arrest, and then took, you know, further action. Six of those were more minor, which would be disorderly, trespassing, and drunkenness. So totally, then we had about six field contacts that we recorded. So I look at four days, and I look at the several thousand people in that concentrated area, 20, you know, complaints is not what I call excessive. But I think the reason we have a low number is because we do have a presence there, which is a deterrent factor. I'm working with Mr. Whitehouse and Brilliant Game about working with those establishments that sell the beer as to security after that 11 o'clock hour, how we're gonna change or ramp up or do things differently than we do at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. We met with the neighbors, they told us their concerns. But one thing, when I pulled the statistics, in that block, we just didn't have any reported incidents. Doesn't mean it didn't occur, it just no one called us on it, or they noticed it later, and then basically put up with it, but just didn't call us. But we had, like I said, 20 reported incidents, so we took action on it. When I talked to Mr. Wright and the neighbors, and heard his complaints, I immediately got with our captain, she is a, our special events coordinator, and we're going to work on some adaptive patrols in that area, foot patrols, bicycle patrols, or have officers in that area about the times that we think this is occurring to help out. And like Mr. Whitehouse said, we are not going to catch or deter all crimes, simply because of the sheer numbers. But we do have quite a few officers deployed there, we have to be financially responsible, if I put 200 officers there, we're still gonna have incidents. But I think we have the right number based on the past action plan to police, you know, the upcoming event. And we're always monitoring and taking a temperature of what's going on. You know, we have support of our road patrol who's out in the city policing if we have a problem at the festival. We also have support of other agencies under mutual aid in case we have something that occurs. But I feel that in the past, we've put the appropriate force out there and taken the appropriate action for what's been going on. And I think this year, I have no fear that we can do the same thing, and in addition, work on the 200 block of Clay and the surrounding areas during those times that were brought to us, to try to do some enforcement there and some presence so that these things don't happen. And I think with the parking lot changes, bringing the bathrooms into different areas, and all the things we're doing, what we're doing the best we can to minimize those problems that the neighbors I know are experiencing, so.
Anything else, commissioners? Matt, roll call please.
I just wanted to add, this is, again, more of a comment than a question. I, as all of us do, listen to my neighbors and the local businesses that I patronize and so on. So I take very seriously the concerns that we heard expressed tonight, because they're legitimate. These are real experiences that people have to deal with. So when you have that, you have to weigh, is the benefit of the event worth the discommodation of the folks' normal routine, and in some cases for businesses, affecting their income? I look at other local areas as well, and I'm not comparing one event to another as because of what it is, but just the effect that a large type of event has on a community. And all of the concerns that I've heard expressed, I also hear expressed amongst the people I know who live in Grand Haven regarding the Coast Guard Festival. That it's crowded, that it's noisy, they can't access their businesses, and a lot of folks that I know of, and several work in my office, take that week off and, you know, basically move out of town for the duration. I think most people enjoy the Coast Guard Festival and are willing to tolerate that for the benefit it brings to Grand Haven. We all look at our men in uniform and women in uniform, and we look at the Coast Guard, and you don't get the same reaction you do when you're talking about people riding motorcycles. There are some people that any motorcycle is just not going to be acceptable to them. And so you get a different take on the willingness to tolerate this type of event, because the bikes are loud. They do make, I mean, I can hear them in my house, and I'm a 10-minute walk from Western Avenue, so I appreciate that. But when I look at, this has become a signature event for this community, when I see a willingness to work with city staff and the local businesses to try to lessen those problems and to improve the quality of the event, I'm willing to, I get, you know, give this a shot this year, keep an eye on how it's going. And, you know, I think if we feel that it continues to improve and continues to showcase the community in a positive way, then I'm willing to support it. And if we feel it reaches a point where it doesn't, then I think all of us would feel the same way, that it would be time to perhaps see a different location used for this event. So, I see both sides of this, I appreciate the amount of compromise that's taken place, and given that, I'm willing to support that for this year. And we'll see how it goes. So, thank you.
Sure enough. Roll call please.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Savica?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And Paul will continue to work with you and monitor and collaborate to make sure that everybody benefits and we all can be as comfortable as possible. Item C, please.
Mobile food vending ordinance, city clerk, summer request. In consultation with downtown Muskegon now, staff has developed a mobile food vending ordinance for consideration. The proposed monthly fee is $300. Those established brick-and-mortar businesses located in the city of Muskegon selling their own goods through the mobile food vending ordinance may pay a monthly fee of $150. Brick-and-mortar restaurants located in the targeted DDA area will be charged a monthly fee of $50. Mobile food vehicles shall not be left unattended and cannot be parked between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. They shall not operate within 1,000 feet of any city-approved special event or lease park. Vendors wishing to sell at the farmer's market must obtain permission through management of the farmer's market. Mobile food vehicles shall not be parked within 150 feet of any existing brick-and-mortar restaurant during the hours when such restaurant is open to the public for business unless permission has been obtained from the restaurant. Applications will be considered for the following areas: Sherman Boulevard, Henry Street, Apple Avenue, Laiton Avenue, Getty Street, as well as within the area of the downtown district authority and industrial parks. Comments from the downtown businesses are attached, as well as mapping indicating the distance of 150 feet, 200 feet, 250 feet, and 300 feet parameters around existing brick-and-mortar businesses. Staff recommendation, adopt the ordinance as presented, as well as the resolution stating the areas that a mobile food vending vehicle, trailer, cart may operate.
Commissioner Rinsama-Savica?
I'd like to move that we approve the mobile food vending ordinance and adopt it as presented, as well as the resolution stating the area that a mobile food vending vehicle, trailer, cart may be operated.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rinsama-Savica, seconded by, Commissioner Ken Johnson, to adopt the ordinance involving mobile food vending ordinance as presented, as well as the resolution stating the areas that a mobile food vending vehicle, trailer, cart may operate. Questions, comments? Commissioner?
Just a question. I don't recall seeing this before, so I'm wondering if it's an addition, or maybe I just missed it. But the brick-and-mortar restaurants located in the targeted DDA area will be charged a monthly fee of $50? Is that added since the last one?
That was a, yes, it was. Based on feedback we received, the idea was to let the businesses that are within the city have the reduced fee of $150, but then the ones that are within the DDA that want to have a food cart have even more affordable one, that maybe they want to put out in front of their own store or something like that, make it not cost prohibitive for them to do that, being that they're already downtown.
I love that addition. I was just thinking of that yesterday, I was like, we should have a different rate for people in the DDA, so I'm happy to see that added. Targeted DDA, that's the entire DDA?
Entire DDA.
Okay.
Commissioner Turquist?
At our last meeting, I am not a super fan of kiosks that infringe upon other businesses, but I appreciate the effort made by staff sending out the questionnaires. I think there were some 20 responses and one negative. So you've swayed me over, and I will support the recommendation.
Commissioner?
Yeah, just a quick question about, excuse me, businesses should not operate within 1,000 feet. We talked about that at the last meeting, wasn't it 500 feet at first?
Oh, that was 150 feet, it was 300.
Okay, didn't they increase it to 1,000 now?
Well, it was 300, 150 was a different thing, but I think Ann looks like she wants to explain that.
No, no, just the 1,000 feet is away from any special event, city-approved special event, so they can't be closer, they have to be part of that event to be closer.
Oh, okay. All right.
Commissioner Hood?
Did you? Oh.
I think I'm very supportive of this idea, and the only concern I've heard, the biggest concern I've heard is that the fee is still too high, and that some people are concerned that people still won't take advantage of this, you know, opportunity because of the, especially if you're outside of the city, $300 a month. And some people pointed out that maybe other cities have lesser fees. I think that this is a good starting point. I really think this is a great idea, and we should see how it goes for a year and possibly revisit that with input from, you know, people who might operate such things. Also, I talked to a couple of people in the industrial park, and they were very supportive of the idea too. I was, thought they might be concerned parking on Keating or, you know, in front of ADEC, but they seem to like the idea, so I think it would be great.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm very pleased to see this come forward. I know the concerns that the folks who own the brick-and-mortar businesses have, and I am supportive of the fee structure included here. I mean, we're not having people set up a lemonade stand for a nickel of glass. These are, people are gonna have to put together a reasonable business plan and have the capital to operate this. And in these fees, if that is excessive, I would question whether or not they have a valid business plan. The other thing is, is right now, we're in kind of a chicken and an egg dilemma, you know, which came first. And we're told a lot of times, "Well, I'd like to do something downtown, but there's not enough traffic to justify it." And we hear that from the banks in particular. Well, how do you generate traffic with, you know, empty space? And that's a discussion for a different time as to how we ended up with all the empty space, but it's there. And this is an opportunity to create some traffic, fill in some of that empty space with a very low-cost threshold, and if it's successful, we will see that traffic level increase and hopefully reduce that barrier for people who might otherwise be interested in investing in downtown in brick-and-mortar businesses. So I think this will ultimately help, if executed, with the seriousness toward these being money-making operations. And I think as traffic increases, that the local businesses that are already downtown, we'll see additional people downtown helps their business as well. I just think we need to be aware, though, as we've seen with our liquor licenses and so on, that you still have to have a good business plan, you still have to have quality product, you have to have excellent service, and you have to be consistent. If you're there some days and not other days, if you close up shop early some days and not other days, you're not gonna have a business, and this won't work. And so I think now the challenge is with the folks who've been advocating for this to make this work, and I hope it does. I think we will all benefit.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Matt, roll call please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, sorry, there's no public comment.
Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Savica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item D, please.
Amendment to the transient merchant ordinance, city clerk, summer request. Staff compared the current transient merchant ordinance with several other communities and reviewed comments received by customers and is making recommendations. Some proposed changes include offering the license as an annual fee instead of a daily license currently allowed a maximum of 60 days per calendar year. The current fee is $30 per day, the proposed fee is $150 annual fee renewed on May 1st of each year. The bond amount is proposed to increase from $500 to $1,000. School-sponsored events should not require a permit. Merchants may stay in one location no longer than 45 days, current ordinance states 90 days. Hours shall be set between 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. Merchants may not operate within 1,000 feet of any approved special event or lease park unless they have obtained a permission from the event sponsor or leasing. The license does not allow for the sale of goods or services at any city-owned park facility or farmer's market without a permit from the city. Residents and businesses selling parking spaces on their property during a city-approved special event in the downtown district are required to obtain a license. At least one ADA-compliant restroom facility with a hand-washing unit must be made available to the public for the first 50 parking spaces being offered on a parcel, and two restroom facilities be available on parcels selling 100 or more parking spaces. The license must be prominently displayed at the entrance to the parking facility, and if the number of parking spaces meets or exceeds 50, a sign must be prominently displayed indicating to the public that a public restroom is available. The fee for a license is proposed to be $25 for the first parking, 50 parking spaces, and $50 for more than 50 parking spaces on one parcel. Staff recommendation, adopt the ordinance as presented.
Commissioner? Commissioner Johnson?
I move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to adopt the ordinance as presented regarding amendment to the transient merchant ordinance. Any comments? Questions? Matt, roll call please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Savica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business commissioners? And I have Mr. Rob Murphy, who wanted to speak on the Elsie Walker Arena.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's Rob Murphy, temporary resident, 1718 Beach Street, Muskegon, Michigan, vice president of business development for Elsie Walker Arena and Events Center. And just want to spend a couple minutes tonight thanking you for the opportunity to visit with you a couple weeks ago, and share a few updates. We take real seriously the opportunity and privilege to manage Elsie Walker Arena, and I think it was Warren Buffett who said, "Someone is sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago." Well, Louis Carl Walker planted a rink in downtown Muskegon 54 years ago. And those of us who have been here just a short time... First, May 6, Kenny Thomas, an Army Airborne Ranger, country music star, and one of the best speakers I think you'll ever listen to, is going to be visiting Muskegon. It's part of a new leadership lunch series that we're launching, really to help motivate Muskegon, its residents, business leaders, and inspire, challenge, and motivate Muskegon to be all that it can be. And so Kenny is our inaugural speaker. We're thrilled that he will be here in Muskegon with an unbelievable message on leadership and the challenge for our residents and those in attendance. We've received some real good response from some high schools in the area, as well as business leaders who'll be joining us. May 17, a little different event will be taking place in downtown Muskegon. We'll announce this week. We'll sign a five-event series with knockout promotions. It's mixed martial arts. Once again, a little different event, but we'll have two of those signed in our main bowl, three in our annex over the course of 2014. We have five hockey camps coming to town, including the Detroit Red Wings and one of the gentlemen you'll see perhaps when you go home tonight. Number Eight, Justin Abicater, will be with us this summer at the Elsie Walker Arena, helping teach the next generation of youth a little bit about hockey in character at both our Detroit Red Wing Youth Camp and our Hockey Ministries International Camp. And then one thing we're excited about, they're not real excited about this in Spooner, Wisconsin, but we've landed for the first time the USA Hockey Officials Training Camp. This is historically built and held in Spooner. It's the last week of August. 75 of the best and brightest young officials will be coming to Muskegon, staying at the Holiday Inn. And if you're looking for an opportunity to come on out and perhaps cheer on a referee, we'll have that opportunity last week of August. And there's a lot more on the docket, but we just wanted to thank you once again for the opportunity to serve you, the city, the county, and the residents of Muskegon. Look forward to being back later this summer with some additional events taking place at Elsie Walker Arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. You bet. That sounds exciting. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public I'd like to address?
I have some pictures. Judge Judy shows pictures, so I guess Muskegon says, "I have a real concern..."
Eloise, I just need your name and address.
Steve, you know who I am.
I know, but for the record.
I'm Eloise Hefchi, and I live at 1960 Cutler in Muskegon. I have a real concern now that the inspection department belongs to SafeBilt, and I hope they do a real good job, but I should tell you that we have a real problem in one home area in Lakeside, and maybe more, but this one, we have been fighting for two years. And SafeBilt today say there's nothing wrong with that place. It's a house that has junk all over the yard. She has a yard sale. It's on right now, and I have pictures to show you. A clothesline strung up with clothes, and you're going to see them come Halloween. They're still going to be there. In fact, I have a picture here of the Halloween leafbag. But two different people called SafeBilt today, and she told me that they'd been out and looked at it, there's not a thing wrong with it. And I just wish she lived next door to it. Because I want you to look at these pictures. These are today's pictures. I took them and had them made. This... Yep. This is on Lincoln Street and Crozier, and Lincoln gets a lot of traffic. And so it's a real good example of what people keep their yards up. Now, I should tell you, don't worry about measuring her grass, whether it's eight inches long. There's nothing can grow there, besides this stuff would hire it. But I want you to take a look and see, how would you like that? And SafeBilt says there's nothing, absolutely nothing, wrong with that. They've been out there today, and they approve of what that is. And I, I think you gentlemen better take a deep look at it, because I think it's a disgrace, and I think somebody's got their words all wrong. I think it's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that...
Do you see the Halloween leafbags yet? Yeah.
The issue may not necessarily be SafeBilt. Their job is to enforce the ordinance. And I'm sure that, I saw the manager taking some notes. If there's a defect in enforcement, we'll take care of that. If the issue is there's a loophole in the ordinance that allows this, we'll take care of that, too.
They told me today and another person that you can have one garage sale a year. And when I went by later today, she put a little sign up in front, "Garage Sale."
Yeah.
But what I'm telling you is, we do, we went through this all last summer and complained, and we're starting this year again, and I think it's a disgrace.
We've had a couple other locations where people have...
I'm sure.
Garage sales daily from the last snow on the ground to the first snowfall. So I understand.
Okay. And I want to thank you very much, and I want to thank you for the job you people do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eloise. Any other members of the public that like to address the commission? Matt, Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing more. I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.
Good night. There are some things that...